Would I? Yeah. Get it ever.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda? So move, okay?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Uh, three sets of minutes.
Yep, the last two were sent yesterday.
I did look at them. I didn't see any big issues.
Nothing.
I have no corrections.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, call for a vote on the minute.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Myron.
Morning.
Good morning.
Bell Plain seems to be a popular utility area at the moment. Last week, or two weeks ago, I remember we talked about fiber lines. Interstate power and light that are known as the line energy to most of us is needing to rebuild their gas line in the Bell Plain area, primarily on Eighth Street, Bell Plain, but that turns into Seventy-Eighth Street Trail, going east out of town, Eleventh Avenue going south. For those old timers, the Hogbine Station corner. The part of its rebuild, or all of its rebuild, but going from that intersection south, their gas line is on the west side of the street, going towards the high school. They're gonna put it on the east side and then bring it across for the high school, I think, or at least at the particular line. I have a utility permit. The line knows they need to follow depths and I don't see a problem, but I would take a motion to approve that utility permit for Interstate Power and Light.
I would make the motion.
I'll second.
Do you call for a vote?
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Got her.
The signature, dated, and signature.
He didn't even take a photo, and I wouldn't lie here for half a second.
A little warmer here, probably.
Just a bit. Bull's aye. That's all I have.
Discuss and set public hearing date for the FY twenty-six budget amendment number two.
Yep, so as you know, there's a few things that people have already come in and requested. Pioneer Cemetery is one. There's some things I need to juggle, some spending authority. So, probably like to just get it done now. So if we could set it for November twenty-fifth at nine-thirty in the morning, and I will send out a department head email just in case somebody might have something else that I'm not aware of. Oh yeah, I have time to get it to the newspaper and...
Yep. So can I get a motion from you, one of you gentlemen?
Juvenile detention is obviously one, so I'm holding those bills right now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Nope. We did put a, there's gonna be some in the next pay run, so, out of those.
I would make a motion to set a budget amendment, uh, public hearing for November the twenty-fifth at nine-thirty-eight.
I'll second that. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Okay.
Perfect. Barbara?
Um, I'd like to settle land use hearing for Kyle and Elise Lynch for Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at nine-fifteen.
What was that date again?
November twenty-fifth.
Okay. Nine fifteen. Hey, can I get a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to set the land use hearing for Kyle and Elise Lynch. Oh, is that, yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Uh, for nine fifteen on November twenty-fifth.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All right, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
And Barb, wanna hit the next one right away?
I'd like to have you approve a farm exemption application for Matthew Rogge. Uh, he is part of the family farm operation. His dad, David, and him farm a hundred and sixty acres of corn and soybean rotation in Monroe, twenty-seven. And he'd like to build a home out there.
Everything's in order?
It is.
Nothing there with the... What's the area?
Nope.
Put it out on the map, mark four.
It's Monroe, twenty-seven.
Yep. There you go. Paper's important. Day road? Play it out.
Oh, okay. Right in that area, that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the exemption?
I will make the motion.
Okay. I'll second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
A little bit, couple minutes for a little bit, Sheriff, talk slow. Or, God.
So we're in the process of hiring a jailer right now, uh, to replace some of, someone that we lost a couple months ago. In addition, we'd like to hire, uh, two, two jailers, so plus one to our staffing levels. Reason for that is one of our jailers is in the National Guard and she's going to be, uh, gone the majority of next year, so we'd like to hire somebody to fill her role and have that person trained by the time she, uh, goes to boot camp. Um, our jail numbers have been hovering around twenty when we took over. Um, we've moved those numbers to about thirty-five. We've doubled our federal inmates from ten to twenty to generate more revenue. So we have additional revenue coming in and we'd like to take some of that back to help hire, or help the jail staff by hiring, um, the plus-one jailer. Right now, because we are short, overtime budget is, uh, taking a hit, so we'd like to, uh, alleviate that by getting back to full staff. Anything else you wanna add there?
Are these full-time positions or part-time?
It would be a full-time position.
We're also working on, uh, redoing our federal inmate contract. We're only at fifty dollars a day. We're gonna raise that to seventy-five, so that'll be more revenue also.
We don't have part-timers in the jail anymore. We cut that out of the budget, um, with the idea of having just full-timers. Just part-time employees just were not that reliable.
And there's another off, or officer, another correctional officer that's gonna be off, uh, with a hip surgery, so he's, we're gonna, I mean, we're just, it's just not looking good with personnel right now. So we're trying to stay ahead of, ahead of the curve a little bit.
So. You're looking to hire two?
Right. One is an existing position and then just plus one for the reasons that we've stated, you know? Got a guy gonna be on medical, another one that's gonna be gone in the guard, so.
Is it in your budget, district's budget?
It's not in our budget. Uh, salaries for jailers after one quarter, we're right on the button, seventy-five percent remaining. Um, but revenue right now, overall revenue, we're about three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand ahead and we expect that to increase. The goal is to double the revenue than what was projected for this year.
Then the contract with the feds, when can that get changed?
We're working on it.
The X, I've already got the X's, I just gotta fill out the application. It took two months to get the online stuff approved, but it just got approved. All I gotta do is rework the contract and submit it. They're actually reaching out to us saying it's long overdue.
Yeah.
They recommend moving close to seventy-five dollars an hour from fifty.
In Lynn County here a few years ago, they had a problem with them.
Yeah, they're, they've smoothed that over. They're back, they got a little different deal. They do all their transports and stuff, so they, they get a considerable...
You don't do none of the transports?
It's, we'd have to hire more people, it's just the juice ain't worked discreet, you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense for us. We do, we do the, the local, like if somebody has to go to a dentist appointment here in town, which actually we don't even use those anymore, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be part of the new contract to do local transports.
Are the marshals are willing to haul them?
Yes. Yep. We are holding, we were holding a few, we also have a contract with, uh, Polk County. They were gonna give us up to ten, are we, do we have any Polk County right now? We might have one or two, so we're trying to keep the jails full as possible.
Having ten federal inmates, I think we roughly bring in twenty-two thousand a month. So we moved from ten inmates to twenty, to double those numbers. So the money's there, we'd like to use some of that to give the jail staff some additional help.
Is that gonna require a part of the amendment then?
Probably, we'll have to discuss that.
Should have to move that in.
Yeah.
We're trying to be self-sustainable.
Understand, but go ahead and get some numbers down on paper, you know what I mean? And then get it to Haley, of course, so she can get it printed.
Yeah, we'll fill the revenues, outstanding the expenditures.
For the November. I have no problem, it sounds like it, you're in top of things, so.
Yeah. Okay. Being proactive instead of reading.
That was our plan from the beginning.
That makes sense. Jail's a tough spot, keep moving.
We've been trying to hire a good candidate for quite a while. We've interviewed a lot of people, but we wanna have some pretty good standards in bringing the right people. They're gonna stick around, yep.
Are there any restrictions on where that money can go? I know, like the split with the county attorney's office, there's restrictions on that.
So...
On the collection side you're talking?
Yeah.
Regarding room and board, it's a sixty-forty split. Sixty percent comes back to general fund, to us, allocated to us, but we don't have spending authority on that, if I understand that right. Um, we're in the middle of restructuring jail fees completely. Um, we just finished up a medical plan that we'll send over to Derek to review. Actually, just wrapped that up yesterday.
Yeah, I've been looking at that too.
We're gonna start getting reimbursed for all these mental health drugs that we weren't getting reimbursed for, we should have been for the last how many years, which is five, six thousand dollars a month, so...
Can be huge.
Through the region, which wasn't done, so that's gonna be a huge cost savings for the county, so.
Just to give you a...
You're gonna want like logs and all that for you to submit?
Yeah, we've already sent in, we couldn't go before July because it was a different region, so they said, no, sorry, we can't help you, but we were able to go from July moving forward. Which our first one was like literally five thousand dollars. I mean, it's, it's a tremendous amount of money.
Just to give you guys an overall picture of what we're trying to do with all these changes, we're projected at six-hundred-and-three thousand in revenue. Um, our goal after the first year is to double that to one-point-two million. So we would like to use some of the money for staffing.
So, we've got on the agenda here, discuss and or approve for additional jail positions. So, can I get a motion to either approve or deny?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay. Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
There you go, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're up to par then on all the other vacancies, correct?
Everything else?
Well, we still have a, we still have one vacant deputy.
Okay, but otherwise?
Dispatches.
Dispatch is good?
Dispatch is good, just the one, the deputy, but we gotta...
Kipchen?
Work through civil service, Kipchen's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good day, Dylan.
Matt.
Dylan and Tiffany Nevis are seeking approval, change the use of approximately two acres of land to allow for single-family dwelling. This property is located two miles north of Bell Plain, has an address of twelve-oh-five Seventy-Fifth Street, and that's located within Section Four of Iowa Township. This proposal concerns a seventy-nine acre parcel that's owned by Dara Lee and Ronald Schnorr. The majority of the area this request has a corncivility rating of fifty-eight, which is not considered high-quality farmland. The area is currently a small cornfield, which is isolated from the main fields by the ponds and the building site. Access to the property will continue via the existing driveway, which was reviewed and approved by Dan McKenna from Secondary Roads Department. The property is accessed from Seventy-Fifth Street, a gravel county road with an average daily traffic count of forty vehicles. The dwelling will require a new septic system, which will be permitted by the department, and the applicant hopes to utilize the existing well that is located on the property. The surrounding area is all in agricultural row crops, um, surrounding the site. Three notification letters were sent out to adjacent property owners and legal notices were published in the official newspapers, and the department did not receive any public comments concerning this request. And as was mentioned, the site lies within an area with a lower corncivility rating, and it's situated on the property in an area that is separated from the main agricultural fields, and as such, this proposed dwelling is not expected to negatively impact nearby agricultural operations.
Only question I got, they don't own the ground, right?
No, it is their family that they're, they're gonna be purchasing a smaller portion of that, yep.
Got it. Understood.
Was that little cornfield where the new building is?
Yes, yep, so, yeah, I read, yes.
To do that.
Yeah, it's a very small area, that was just in the last few years they put that up.
No, dude, you couldn't even turn around.
Yep, exactly.
The rest has all been picked except for that little deal, if that answers your question.
That address sticks in my mind for a reason.
So can I get a motion to either approve or deny?
I would make the motion to approve this land use hearing.
I would second.
Okay, I will call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Thank you.
Ten forty-five, not free with Haley.
What's that? Not where you're thinking?
Nope. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you.
Well, Robert, we got ten minutes yet, so.
Okay, report. Last week I had a bunch of meetings, uh, start with, uh, juvenile detention. They're reworking the fee schedules, they're gonna do away with the... We'll say if someone is more difficult in the member counties, they're gonna get just an across-the-board and it's gonna, every day will be a hundred and fifty dollars instead of some of them being upwards of four hundred.
Which we're paying the four hundred right now.
So that'll be a, we, they've gotta get this twenty-eight E agreement done, then we have to get voted back in, uh, but currently, they, they say that we're going to be extended that because we were a member county before this lawsuit they went through, and now that that's all being taken care of, once everybody does the voting and the new twenty-eight E agreement comes in, then we'll be a member county again. That's the biggest thing, uh, one big thing that came out of there. The other one is they are working on replacing their top administrative position over there. They have closed the application process, they are waiting, or they are working on going through, uh, with a hiring committee and we're gonna try to narrow that down to two people for the, uh, combined November-December meeting. And I'll go backwards, uh, have the, uh, HACAP meeting. The, the shutdown is looming on some of their stuff, depending on when it gets done, if things get renewed, but right now they're still going forward in good, good shape with everything. Uh, and... There was one other there. HACAP. Bruce, I'll think about it, 'cause I know you had a big one.
Yeah, we had the, uh, Heartland Insurance Group meeting on Thursday. Normally they're a two-hour meeting, this one went to, it's a four-hour meeting, we had a couple of closed sessions. Um, one of the biggest ones, I gave you guys copies of this stuff, uh, our Benton County's loss ratio for, uh, workman's compensation was one-hundred-and-thirty-seven point nine percent, which is over the top high.
We gotta get hard, 'cause we were doing really good.
Very, very hard. And, uh, all the other lists, uh, Benton County is listed at or near the top in claims, uh, so we've got some work to do as far as trying to bring that number down, uh, and try to get our workman's comp claims somehow under control, uh, 'cause we are the highest out of ten counties. Which is, it's always good to be on the top, but this is not where we wanna be on this particular one. Uh, so that'll be something we'll work on moving forward. Uh, also, um, I've got the East Central Iowa Workforce Development Board financing on Thursday. Ron, I was gonna ask you, I got an email about a meeting, uh, the advisory board agenda for the Iowa Department of Corrections Sixth District, is that, I got an email on that, is that?
I'll look at my emails.
It's a Zoom meeting and it's, it's Friday at one. Very short agenda, it's only eight items, including the adjournment. Uh, it's just the, uh, it's not much, but I mean, I'll, I'll definitely, I can definitely sit in on the Zoom.
I'll sit in on the Zoom also.
But, I didn't know if you had, I didn't see your name listed in the email, that's why I wondered.
One of those that you got appointed to, what is the, will you forward me that and I'll look at the...
Yeah.
The directory owner, if you were appointed to that.
It's a surprise.
For them to get...
I don't think I've ever gotten an email on one either. I was, I was like, well, I didn't know.
I did send you guys the district, Sixth Supervisor one, right? Has that not changed too, did you see that?
That's the, uh...
December...
The advisor, Sixth, this is the Iowa Department of Corrections.
Oh.
What, don't remember? It was in Dubuque, right?
Yeah, in Dubuque, no, I don't go.
I just forwarded it to you.
Okay.
So, but I, I've got it on my, my calendar to attend that, so, or it's like you say, it's just a Zoom, and it doesn't look like it's gonna be too long, but, uh, other than that, that was the only thing, uh, that I had last week.
Well, I'll be on Thursday, or Friday at one.
Okay.
I may have to get the, uh, information from you.
Yeah, David, do you wanna forward it on the...
Yeah, I'll see if, if it was something we appointed you to or what.
Yeah, I wasn't...
I've, I've never attended one.
Yeah.
If I was appointed.
Never mind, that's why I asked you, 'cause I didn't, I didn't have a clue on that.
No.
Well, maybe it's one of those, they don't have them very often either, 'cause if it's like for our judicial district or something.
Could be. I met with the gal from the food pantry this morning, they were concerned about, uh, us being open November eleventh for the food pantry, uh, so I persuaded her to move to Wednesday, the twelfth, when we are gonna be here to our supervisor's meeting. So she put these in every sack lunch, or sack lunch, every sack, and people be reminded for the next two weeks that they will not be open on the eleventh of November, the holiday for the county. I guess that's about it, so.
Um, I just looked at the meeting, the minutes for the last meeting of the Sixth District Board, and that was April the fourth, and I did attend.
Oh, okay, as I say, you're prior.
Don't worry about it, I'll take care of it. You guys should have looked at that too.
That's quite a while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay. Don't worry, good.
I know.
Okay, Robert.
Well, thank you. First of all, I wanna thank you for the office. We got a lot of stuff we need to get done, um, but we need access and keys. We have two keys and there's four of us that need access, um, two, you know, extra keys, we need two extra keys, if that's possible. I mean, there's four of us in the vetting area who can work at different times, none of us, or should say, very rarely can all of us work at the same time or at the same time when one of the others is.
You had, do you all have the badges to get into the building?
Three of us do, Jimmy Wheeler would need one.
I wonder if they should have one of those with a code or something too.
So, which key or which door do you need?
We need the outer, the office doors.
Just the, you got keys to get into the room itself?
No, I need a key to get into the room too. I can get into the building.
Okay.
But I cannot get into the office area to the...
You can't get out of the hallway?
Right.
Okay, okay.
You can get in here.
So you need the...
Right.
Okay.
We might have some of those, 'cause whose, whose was it? They're in over here, right?
Michelle, yeah, next door.
I have a bunch of keys with me.
We just went through that.
Yeah, wasn't some of them in there?
Yes. And I got them listed, so we can get you some keys there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Do you need keys for the, what I call the office itself?
Yeah, that's what...
You need that one too.
Yes.
So for both doors.
Both doors.
The wooden heavy one coming into the main room.
Right, and then the office itself.
And then you need keys to get in, okay, we should have them.
Between that or in that box, yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I just went through this a month ago, the keys.
Okay.
And you're requesting four?
Yes.
Well, you got some?
We got two, we've got two, right one.
So two more.
Right, so we need two more.
So you can get in there currently yourself?
I cannot get in there myself. Allison Hicks can.
So, okay, so she's got one.
And Jimmy Wheeler.
They have two.
They're working together on some stuff.
So you just need two?
Right. And he needs access to get into the building.
So he'll need a badge from...
Right.
Okay. All right, I'll work on that.
All right, thank you. Say thank you for the office.
Have the space, Robert?
What's that?
Got enough space in there?
There's, yeah, there's enough space, we just need some chairs. We don't have any, very few.
I'd say patrol the hallway or ask, talk to talk to Rick, we got a lot of chairs around here.
Yeah, I know
We need to have a bunch of those on rollers somewhere.
Yeah, okay, we did have some of these like this in there when we were over here, so I don't, I suppose they all got moved in here.
I even take a few from that.
Yeah.
You could probably take some of those that don't match in here maybe, and just rearrange those, I don't know, just those are just getting my
Very subtle, do we have anybody ever sit behind a chair?
How many chairs?
Four.
I'm sure we can strum up some, there might be
Well, it's might be some of those blue, are they blue?
Over in that
That are out in the hall, sometimes you see them.
Oh, there's a whole, was a whole stack back in the
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I know we have some.
Whatever will work best for you.
Okay, all right, and I don't know if there's any more tables we could get a hold of, the big heavy ones? We had three and, or four, I forget.
You need to talk to Rick.
Okay, all right.
There's one out here in the hallway, I know he was just telling me about that last week, he wanted to get rid of it.
Move it our way.
Okay, all right.
All right, okay, then when will I know about the keys?
Uh give me
We can look when we're done here.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Give you a holler, Robert.
Take care, Robert.
I'll give you a holler if you can come get them, if we, if we know which ones, if they are for sure.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
And thank you, Bruce, for being with us.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Well, we did report. I don't think we got any unfinished business.
My last report was for the region.
Oh, okay.
We're still members of the old mental health region.
Just until we finalize our payment, right?
Till we finalize the payments and then we can withdraw.
So we're paid up in full?
No, no, I, I've been still nitpicking some of the stuff that I didn't agree with, of paying back the lump sum, so.
Okay, how much lump sum were we in?
Um originally she was asking for like thirty thousand back from us, so I was doing more of the accrual side, um you know, 'cause there was payouts, there was some stuff in July that was still from last, and then we also had that indirect cost that we do with cost advisories. So I was going through, 'cause we're always doing that a year, we're paying it a year advanced, so I'm trying to see if I can get that for fiscal year twenty four in there, so stay tuned, but hopefully we'll wrap it up soon.
Now, uh refresh my memory, they help pay for the parking lot out here, right?
That was a fund balance spend down.
Yeah.
Right.
They did that in a lump sum though.
They did, it was a lump sum, it wasn't over a couple of years.
The other with the DHS with the amortization schedule, or whatever you call that schedule, we did
Yeah.
For ten, fifteen years.
I was just curious about that.
Yep.
That was the meeting when uh I was on a Zoom, I came down here to do it, and it said I had an unstable connection. And it would freeze up and finally it said, we're done with you. So I went and talked to Ben and he did something and he said, you won't have that problem anymore.
Ron and I were just talking yesterday, that car is still sitting out there.
Yeah.
But it's not titled in our name, so.
And I guess we could talk about it under old, old business, the other car, what do you wanna do with it? It's ours.
The hubs, but it's, there's two white journeys, the older one is ours, but it was dead last time.
We have new batteries.
It has some issues, so.
We had to have a battery put in it, 'cause it wouldn't keep running, the battery, was that, charge it up and it'd still quit on you?
But before it starts snowing, I would think we'd wanna get those out of there for pushing the snow. And I would think we can force the region to come get that off of our property. Why did they have to have it if it's just sitting there not being utilized?
We're assuming Haley did locate the other one, but
It was in Duquesne County, so they're all, like both of those are titled now in theirs, so they're off of our insurance and
Okay.
But the one that was the hub was, is still under ours.
Yeah, the, the one that we bought for the hub, that was done differently, and that one is still ours.
So there was three total, but two went back, we have one.
Understand, do we need it?
Ah geez, we should've asked Dave if they need one for anything.
But that one is not very reliable because it was having issues when Michelle drove it.
Really?
And that's the one that's been dead even for us to move it, we jumped it and then moved it and then it's still got some problems.
Does it work with the new battery?
It seems to work a lot better. It really hasn't been driven anywhere to find out.
How long has it sat here?
Oh.
It's probably been not moved since probably April.
Yeah, since we moved it, otherwise July, when we went to the when they did away with the regions and went to the districts, it's been sitting since July.
What year is it?
Um I think it's a seventeen, is that right? Is that the older one, I guess?
The, it's the oldest one there.
Well, or there was an overlap there.
'Cause we bought it used.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't have very many miles on there.
If it's sitting around, doesn't do any good.
No. Should we check with the sheriff if he has these for it?
Check with him, because I can't, excuse me, foresee anybody that needs another vehicle. Secondary roads, you don't really need a car.
The only other place I thought was uh, I think it's an all wheel drive model, I didn't know if uh if Dave doesn't need it, if transportation, whatever, needs anything like that.
See, they just bought a van, we okayed that, remember that, just a small van for small trucks?
And this is a little, this is a, I'll call it a small SUV.
Okay.
And the VA has a van too.
And, yeah, I was gonna say the VA has a van, that would be the only question is that how old and how many miles that van is, you know what I mean?
I would imagine this is over a hundred thousand.
But is that van able to put a wheelchair in it and this one wouldn't be?
No, you couldn't, you couldn't get a wheelchair.
I think that might be what that VA man has.
Well, you can pull it up, but I mean, you can't.
Doesn't have a lift.
Yeah. The VAs don't have a lift either, so.
Oh, they don't, okay.
No.
I wasn't sure.
Check with the sheriff first.
Okay. All right, otherwise, like you said, if we ain't got no use for it.
Put it in the auction or something, one of those sites.
Get rid of it while it's still worth something.
They're paying insurance on it, it's just laying there.
Yeah, the one I haven't taken it off just because if something were to happen to it.
Tree fall on it? Okay, all right.
That'll be the best car we ever had.
Careful what you wish for. I don't want any more insurance.
Public comments.
I have a question, do we have any best systems, you know, battery energy storage systems in, in Benton County? Battery storage for, well, here, here's what's going on, you know, with Cedar Rapids, you know, getting involved with all this energy data centers and that type of thing. We've got a company, it's called Greenleaf, that wants to come into Buchanan County and hook up battery storage, which looks like the, the storage centers and that type of thing, and they'll use that as reserve because as we get more data centers, the chance of the grid is, is overuse is, is not good. So I've done some research on that, and with these best systems, they're, you know, they're high cost, they're high risk of fires. And these fires, lithium batteries, anywhere from, depending on the size, there are dozens to thousands of cells in these, in these areas. And for example, there was a fire in uh Moss Landing, California in January, and you can't put these out. And it took five days for this, the fire to stop burning, and about three weeks later, the fire started again. So there's high risk, what happens if you put one um on the edge of Benton and, and corn and, and, you know, the fires, that type of things? The bad thing is the plumes from these lithium batteries, y'all know that from garbage, you know, tho- those type of things. It's carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, it's methane, it's, 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 and where's it gonna go? And that's gonna depend on the wind, the direction of the wind and, and those type of things. For example, the Moss Landing fire, they had to evacuate fifteen hundred people, and now they have lawsuits because there's people with lung problems, there's people with nosebleeds that are uncontrollable, uncontrollable headaches, that type of thing. And, you know, another thing that, that concerns me is that PG, PG&E, Pacific Gas Electric, uh is a company that's being sued. Uh, how many have watched the, the movie Aaron Brockovich? Same company, PG&E is being sued, Aaron Brockovich is involved again with the lawsuits of the people because of their health. And it just shows that a company doesn't give a damn about what's happening in Benton County when they're from California. Another thing that's, that's really concerning is the Department of Defense did, did a study through the Department of Energy that because of different components that, that make these best systems, that whether it's, whether it's technology or what other phases, there are different phases in it, that the Chinese government has one hundred percent influence on all the best systems that are being made because of the components. They control the components. And if that's being something that the Department of Defense is, is concerned about, national security. In fact, Texas, the state of Texas, these best systems are owned, owned by China, China could drop them off the grid at any time. And there's high fi, you know, there's high likely the ability that there's gonna be fires, you know, in the youth, you know, it's been United Kingdom, there's been South Korea, you know, we've had fires in Indiana, Texas, California, and because of what's happening in Cedar Rapids, you know, and that, that, that goes into another thing with these data centers, all the water they use, those things clear. Now, here's gonna be something that you're probably gonna have to battle at some time, is that Microsoft and Google are the two big companies. Two of the richest companies in the United States are in control of this. Now, for example, just the water usage, uh Microsoft built five, has built five data centers in Des Moines with another one, I don't know if they start the, the building and another one to have a sixth or not, but Central Iowa had a water problem, nitrate problem this year. And there was what, fifteen hundred houses that couldn't water their own lawn and that type of thing. And I know in Texas, um because of these data centers, that the, the aquifers are running low. And you drain an aquifer, you don't have any water. So all of this is gonna be tied in with, with our big energy companies and that type of thing, but if somebody comes here and wants to do a battery storage, I would say fight it all you can. Because, well, here's, here's another thing, up in Hazleton where they wanna put the one in, in Buchanan County is that they only need like three acres to add on to the substation, but they're talking about seventy acres. Well, okay, yeah, yeah, what's that tell you? These people also do solar and they also do wind, and depending on who owns it, for example, Greenleaf will come in and build it if, if that's the case, they're given the right to do it. And then there's utility companies like Mid-American or Alliant will buy that out. Well, what's that gonna do? Yeah, there's no eminent domain in, in the state of Iowa, but the utility companies have different rights that, oh, this is needed, you know? Uh we need this to, with the, the data centers, so here we go. Eminent domain is thrown out, you got solar panels like Palo, you got wind turbines and that type of thing. So anyway, just wanted to make you aware of what's going on and, and our location, we're so close to what's going on with the Dwayne Arnold and, and, and what's happening in Cedar Rapids, and Cedar Rapids already thinking about more, more data centers to be built. And uh if you look at another thing, as far as they talk about all this is gonna bring money into the county, well, no, it's not. 'Cause if the utility companies own it, for example, ethanol plant in Fairbank, it's been there for eighteen years. And because of who owned it and because the game is being played that a lesser company will buy out another company, the taxation starts. Uh two years ago, the sixteenth year was the first year of Buchanan County received one cent in tax revenue from that property because it had changed hands like four different times. So that's my sermon for today, but please don't let that happen.
Are, are these best storage units, so I take it they're AC current? Or, or, excuse me, DC current?
Well, I, I think so, yeah, you know, they wanna go into the
They're storing it and converting it.
They're storing it and converting, and guess what?
That's dangerous.
Well, yeah, it is, because if you read the research, there can be a fire that nobody knows about, started from two to thirty minutes before it sets off their alarms, and there isn't a fire department in the state of Iowa, or probably in the nation that can fight these fires, you just gotta let them burn out.
Yeah, foam doesn't work.
Foam doesn't work, now they're, they're, they're trying to do something, I think Phillips is trying to get in there and use some oil, okay? One of our natural resources that we, or is taboo, we don't wanna use that, but, and do a synthetic thing to, to battle it, but here's, here's the thing, you know, you, you were, you were like a first responder, if there was a fire, you're the first one on the scene. Are you gonna worry about oxygen, are you gonna worry about the carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, or are you gonna be in the, in what's going on? And how many fire departments have the, the equipment to do this, and, and it, it's just not good.
Short term, we do, long term, no.
And the other thing is, in the, in the, in the research from like Department of Energy, is that the SOPs basically are non-existent. You know, standard operating procedures, there's really nothing. And in Texas, there was a, there was, this was in a residential area, a guy got up to go to work, it was six o'clock in the morning, he heard these fire alarms. So he called, he called the dispatch, they had no clue of what was going on. And then he called again ten minutes later and, and they went there and they must've gotten it suppressed somehow, but the, the, the county didn't have any records of, oh, this is, this is this toxic, this is in our community, that type of thing. So it goes with the big corporations, they, they only tell you what they think you wanna hear, and a lot of times they don't tell you a whole lot of anything. So it's a big scam. Welcome, welcome to America, two thousand twenty-five. And there's more, but yeah, there's a lot to do, but please don't let them get into the county. We don't need any more toxic chemicals, no. And we don't need to open the door for a big company to be able to take more land away.
Okay.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
An aquifer is not a reservoir. She's gone, she's gone, it ain't coming back next year, it's a snow melt, aquifers are a finite resource. That they made it illegal to inspect them and see our usage and its capacity to regenerate. They made it illegal in Des Moines to study that, 'cause information is dangerous.
I don't, and money is everything, right?
Thank you. I know as for Benton County, the conservation has a, they drill the well out here, right outside of Rogers, right next to their building. That well is mainly to just measure the water level, water table, you know? So that was, to me, that was, I was all for it, just drill a well and they measure that wa, I don't know if they do it once a month, I never got into that, uh but that, they do that out here at Rogers, they check the water, the water table. Anything else? Derek? Quiet, okay.
No one can hear you. I'll steal it from Bruce, so I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll burrow.
Tippit, aye.
Team and I.
Bull, aye.
Weird. We are done.